All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's 5:30. So, you know, my will go ahead and get the meeting called to order. I'd like to thank everybody for being present with us tonight. Do you know that we have one post commissioner that is connected via phone? So if you see me kind of look at the phone, it's because I'm trying to give him time to speak up if by chance he knows that Commissioner Tatum is connected via telephone tonight. But I'd like to thank everybody for being here. And we're going to open up with an invocation and prayer. I'll leave that. Commissioner Tipton, do you want to say something? Is God willing to join? Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you that we can be here. We thank you that we can come and just live in a nation and in a community where we're thankful for this ability that we have the opportunity to come and just do business. We ask for wisdom and discernment. God, we pray tonight for our community. We pray for our nation. We pray for healing for those that were injured over the weekend and for those that lost their life. God, we're just asking for your healing of our country, for your healing of each of us, for all the processes, God, we're just praying for you to just bring this back to what we remember. That we can have disagreements, but we can still love one another, we can still be neighbors. We thank you, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You know, as we get ready to go through the remainder of our agenda, I know that a couple things on our calendar coming up. The Board of Commissioners will have a planning retreat on August the 10th, August the evening of the night then on August the 10th. We'll be getting the information out on that fairly soon. This is going to be facilitated by the Carl Vincent Institute. They can say that for the public, but I'm also trying to remind all of us that we do have something coming up on August the night to participate in. And I would just like to thank everybody for being here with us. The agenda has been published and has been presented. I'm not aware of any amendments that need to be made. Mr. Tatum, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. Well, with no amendments, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
It's okay. I'll second.
A second and discussion. All in favor?
No.
Aye. All right. And the agenda will move forward as it's presented. Next item on our agenda, this one's going to be a public hearing. This is a request for a change in land use classification of down zoning. Property is RZ-190714 on Steve Tate Road, presented by Mr. Michael Leonard. So I turn the floor over first to Charles with Quentin and Bookman, let you go through.
Did you mean commissioners? And do you have this working tonight? Excuse me? This particular case is a down zoning case. There was a text amendment that was approved just recently allowing for this to take place, this type of application and also procedures found in Chapter 67, Section 18. And the case before you is RZ-190714. Advocate is Michael Leonard. Property is located Steve Tate Road, Hubbard Road, Marble Hill. It is currently zoned neighborhood commercial. The advocate is requesting for this application to be zoned from neighborhood commercial to small ag or S.A. Now, the property is approximately 21.63 acres. The intent of zoning request is to construct a single-family dwelling onto the property. As you can see, the property is on the east side of Steve Tate. However, access to this property is from Hubbard Road. You'll notice that on the east of this property is Dawson County. This current survey that you see here is just giving you the exact, approximately the exact piece of land that the, that's the question right now. You'll notice on the bottom, it's not, it's not that entire parcel. It's from that creek there on, which is a subject property. Character area according to our comprehensive plan and future land use map, character area is considered intrigue and big canoe. If I could just highlight a couple of the character traits for this particular area. One is this area is envisioned to allow for mixed residential uses and densities. And also, I want to highlight that this area is also envisioned for, to preserve rural character of the area. And I might add, those properties east of this subject property, even though it's Dawson County, that piece of land is potentially pretty much three to five acres of Dawson County. Though it's on the other hand, big good, intrigue. But after staff has done our research of the area and what have you, we do not feel that this proposed zoning use would be a detriment to what is already out there in terms of the makeup uses, quite a bit of undeveloped land. Therefore, our recommendation, after reviewing the applicant's request, staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the 21.63 acre portion of land contained on parcel 047, 008, small ag zoning district.
Any questions? I think at this point, we'll open up. You guys, how does 10 minutes on both sides of the program, I know Mr. Leonard is here, if you would like to further follow. I think I saw you when you were walking in, so I knew you were here. Any additional information that you'd like to present or anything?
No, you covered it very well and appreciated it. You know, my wife Leonard simply bought a piece of property and, or wanted to build a retirement home. My wife has this silly dream of wanting to have a couple of chickens. And so, you can't do that on neighborhood commercial. You can't build that residential home on neighborhood commercial. And we moved here 30 years ago to Pickens County for the rural feel here. We moved here from Atlanta to get away from the city feel. And it's so important to us to just maintain that. We just want a little elbow room between our neighbors. It's really just that simple. So we bought some acres, managed to build a home, have a couple of chickens, basically that's it.
So, do you have any questions? Mr. Leonard?
I'm concerned I've got his individual chickens and our. It's two things.
I do want to say one other comment, and I just, I don't know if it's there or it's not, but I do want to express my appreciation for the planning department. I've been working with them on a couple of things here lately and just, they've been extremely helpful, both Charles and Ashley, and have gotten to know Ashley very well and just, just constant professionals and just so helpful to somebody like me. It's just trying to figure it out.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak regarding this? You hear the question? Mr. Tatum, do you have any questions or anything? And then you're not in the room to see us, so.
I don't, yeah, thanks.
With no other public comments on, we're talking, we will close the public hearing and move on through the agenda. This will be on the agenda as we reach the rezones portion of the meeting for consideration to either vote in favor or against, or to table some of the review with the package since it is the first time that the public hearing is elected before court. So we will move on through the agenda on the close. I do have a motion to close the public hearing.
It's okay. I'll second.
A second, all in favor?
No.
All right. We'll move on. We have no items for our consent agenda, so the next item after that is employee recognitions. We do have two employees with us tonight, both reaching some milestone points in their career. And we want to get through and make sure we recognize those first and foremost. We've got Mr. Randy Chalmway. Randy has been with our Public Works Department now for 10 years. You can see him out on just about any piece of equipment or any vehicle known to man. And so Randy, if you don't mind, come on up. I'd like to present you with this. You can break curts, we can see. (APPLAUSE). Don't stand right there. Be in the office and just stand behind you and hello. Get back to four, is he ready? You're the first one.
(LAUGHING).
Don't need to squirm. (INAUDIBLE). I actually thought this was helpful. Randy, thank you. So I was getting what Randy thinks. (APPLAUSE). We had an incident a year ago where winter weather incident, it really wasn't much of a winter weather incident, but the news media was determined they were going to find some county that they could come and do coverage of a potential ice storm that never came. So when they called, we went up and Randy was kind of starting to put in some brine on the road, it could potentially ice. And immediately we came over to me and says, well, can we interview him? And he looked at me and said, well, ask him if he's willing to go on the air. But he had a different view, right? He showed it off a little bit different. So I made him the unofficial public information officer for Pickens County that night. Worked out well. The next that we have here tonight, we actually have a 20-year recognition, 20 years of service with Pickens County, Mr. Robert Crummer, has been with Pickens County Fire and Emergency Operations. People would come on up, Robert. (APPLAUSE). And then if you make slow and go up since Tim's not here tonight, I'll make slow and come stand with him.
Oh, you better believe it.
So, awesome job.
I didn't do much. He tolerated me for 20 years, that's all.
Yes, it looks on this plate.
We had those moments.
I understand it, but I agree. You got a successful Pickens County hairstyle, I like that.
We like, we like simple.
So, no, we also have one more tonight. It's not a years of service, but Kristi Easterwood with 911 has information on the recognition. Is Kristi in here?
She's here, Karen, her behalf. She has some comments to read. On behalf of 911 Director Kristi Easterwood, I would like to present the Communications Officer Quarter Award. This award is presented quarterly to a full-time communications officer that has completed their training period and represented the department well through attendance and job performance. Today, we would like to acknowledge Lyndra Rell for her exceptional performance and highest percentage calls taken during the second quarter of 2024. On a personal note, thank you for being the first base of 911 to train me up when I came on board with Pickens County. I'm grateful for your personal and professional approach to public safety. Please accept our gratitude along with a certificate and a small token of our appreciation.
If you'll say good dogs, I'll just sit back there. Her one major weakness is her love about the mountains.
Please slip back.
It says 911 Award and it has Megan right below it. So in my mind, I thought Megan was receiving an award for 911 other than Megan should do the presentation. So I probably shouldn't clarify that just a little bit. Next item on our agenda is under old business. Old business, when we had our meeting last month, we were reviewing proposed amendments to Chapter 67 of the ordinance. The amendments were to cover areas where crypto mining and potential solar farms would have a home within our ordinance prior to, they need a warrant where addressed or mentioned. The proposal to the amendments that has been provided to each of the board members and discussed here in a court session, and we've kind of gone back and forth between the planning office and attorneys in several other counties under the ACCP on trying to gather information, would update our table, which is within Chapter 67. The table shows the uses of properties, so it has a place within there for both solar and for crypto mining. That puts it under industrial with a conditional use within there. It also talks about the types of premise that are allowed, the equipment used and the rules following those. I know each of the commissioners have had a chance to look over this for the last few weeks. We went back and forth, which we removed a couple of items in the original draft. I think the original draft that you had had some noise regulation that was adjusted and removed, so that would be a part of the conditional use process during the application. And hopefully you've all had a chance to review that. I will first call for a motion and a second, get it to the floor, and then if you have any discussion or questions, we can address that. Do I have a motion to approve the amendments to the ordinance of Chapter 67?
It's okay. I'll second.
All right, so I have a move and a second. That way it brings it up for any discussion or questions. Do you guys have anything? If you want to.
How do you go?
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Cage. So Commissioner Tatum, since our ordinances do have a place on each for all signatures for each of the commissioners, I'll have myself and Commissioner Tipton sign it tonight. And if we gave Lees's office review, whatever you were able to come back in, if you don't mind, to get that finalized.
Yeah, no problem.
Get that taken care of. One thing that, the next item on our agenda that ticked off of that is a resolution. And then two months ago, we did put a moratorium on industrial zone properties for the purpose of trying to review that particular topic with the passage of adding that information into Chapter 67. And we have a resolution that lifts that moratorium on any new industrial land use designation, since we now have a category and a set of procedures that followed that. With that, do I have a motion to approve the resolution to lift that moratorium on industrial properties?
It's okay. I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
No. No.
All right, were you speaking up before I go for the vote?
No, I was just saying I do have a motion.
Oh, okay. So all in favor was unanimous there. Approve that resolution to get that lifted. All right, next on our agenda, under new business, we have an employee handbook update. I know this was discussed at our last work session. There was changes to include the social media, instead of listing the individual types of social media, that has been changed to refer to just social media. We've also added the insurance recommending categories for one section, the next one, I'm glad this is included here. They have to be very well polished aside.
It's harassment.
Yeah, harassment, obviously. And I know that was reviewed by each commissioner when we were going into work session portion. So those have been updated into the county handbook. Do I have a move to approve the recommended changes to the employee handbook?
It's okay. I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
No. Aye.
Get that into the handbook. Next item on the agenda is listed as water tank maintenance contracts. The reason that's plural is each individual tank has its own separate contract that's necessary to go through in the event that one tank was taken offline or replaced with a different type of tank. It wouldn't amend the entire agreement for all water tanks. So American Water Tank, or American Tank Maintenance is the company. They actually provide the services for most of the counties surrounding us. They've came out and done inspections, they've come out and done reviews, actually did some minor repairs while they were doing the inspections, just to assist. These tanks have all been online for a number of years, and each have never actually had a maintenance contract in place. This would cover painting, this would cover repair work, this would cover anything that's required from the state when they come up to inspect the tanks to make sure that they're all in place. So if you don't mind, I'm going to go through each individual contract. We'll vote on those separately, just because the language on most is, most is the same except for the cost and the size of the tanks. So I'm going to list each one and then we'll go through individually, so we'll make sure that it's all reviewed. The first is Highway 53, refers to as the Blue Tank. It's a smaller 30,000 gallon tank that feeds the large tank that's there. It is managed annual fee for the first two, three years, one, two, and three, first three years of the contract will be $1,989 per year. The annual fee for the contract on year four shall be adjusted to reflect that current cost as the, as the work that's been done to get it up to speed, the cost actually comes down. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the agreement for the Highway 53 Blue Tank?
It's okay. I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? Would you see what I'll say? That wouldn't be a bad idea.
You can weld those tanks.
The workmen's account claims would probably exceed what the total cost of all contracts were there. This is the smaller, because it's a small tank. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
No. No.
All right, so we'll move forward to the next tank. The next one's our Henderson Mountain Tank. It's 120,000 gallon bottle-shaped stamped pipe tank. Contracts for it began on August 1st, 2024. Annual fee for contracts one, two, and three will be $1,989 per year. Annual fee for four should be adjusted to reflect the current cost of service. So they'll make that adjustment to the cost of service at that point in time. With that, do I have a motion to approve the contract with American Tank Maintenance for Henderson Mountain Tank?
It's okay.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, next is the Tape Tank. Tape Tank is actually a 500,000 gallon elevated tank. It is much more, very much higher. This contract has got annual fee for contracts one, two, three, four, and five would be $53,907, the annual fee, following in years six, seven, and eight would be $22,877 per year. This is an elevated tank, much, much more here, and requires a lot more significant work to be done than the two smaller tanks that were previously covered. With that, do I have a motion to approve the contract for Tape Tank Maintenance?
It's okay.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
No. Aye.
Next is our Sequoia Mountain Tank. Sequoia Mountain Tank is a 300,000 gallon ground storage tank. It's not elevated. The rate for Sequoia Mountain would be in years one, two, three, four, and five, a rate of $32,943 per year. The annual fee for six, seven, and eight would go down to $12,414. With that, do I have a motion to approve the maintenance contract for our Sequoia Mountain Tank?
It's okay.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
No. Aye.
Here's. Next one is our Hill City Tank. It's also a 300,000 gallon ground storage tank. Contract rates on it, I believe, are the exact same for this contract for years one through five to be $32,731 per year. Six, seven, and eight would go down to $12,414 per year. Do I have a motion to approve the Hill City Tank?
It's okay. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
No. Aye.
Here's. The next is referred to as our Blood Better Tank, which is off of Cove Road. It's a 500,000 gallon concrete ground storage tank. A contract for that tank for years one through five is $14,227. Annual fee for contract in six through eight is $7,660. With that, do I have a motion to approve the contract for maintenance for our Blood Better Tank?
It's okay. Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
No. Aye.
All right, I think this is our last one. And this is our largest tank, our Churchyard Tank, which is on the west end of Pickens County on 53. It's a 1 million gallon concrete stamped pipe tank. The cost of maintenance for that tank in years one through five will be $24,271. And the annual fee in years six through eight will go down to $11,177. So with that, do I have a move to approve the maintenance contract on the River River Tank?
It's okay. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
No. Aye.
All right, so that has all of the different water tank maintenances that we'd be able to begin. By the way, they'll work with any time one has to come offline or anything to, if there's updates, we will make sure that that information is shared and we'll take care of that. Next item on our agenda is a fire service inquiry under government agreement with the city of Nelson. Prior to, over the last several years, Cherokee County has actually covered all of Nelson, both the Pickens side and the Cherokee side. What we're trying to do is work with the city of Nelson to separate where our county fire service will cover the fire response and anything on the Pickens side of the city of Nelson. And as the agreement has been uploaded and provided to each member of the board prior to tonight, we can be able to review. The city of Nelson actually approved on their end on June the 4th. We have the minutes and the signature reflecting that they're through after they reviewed the contract. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion authorizing me as chairman to decide the undergovernmental agreement with the city of Nelson for providing fire service on the Pickens County side of the city.
It's okay. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions after review? With none, all in favor?
No. Aye.
I keep thinking Commissioner Tatum's going to have me break a tie on every single one of these with the pause between without having any impression. All right, so the next item on the agenda is our action item quarterly finance report. So let's run it with our finance director.
I'm going to try to send it from here, so I don't have my glasses.
Well, you can walk to the side with your book or do it.
Yeah.
That way. Just say.
All right, so this is our second quarter of this year 2024 finance report. This is a chart of revenue. General fund budgeted revenue is $37,639,424. For actual for general fund is $9,563,66. Special revenue fund, which is E911, revenue budgeted for that is $747,865. And actual is $633,486. Proprietary funds budget is $6,493,198. And actual is $4,238,627. All right, so general fund revenue, which should be at 50% or more. Taxes is 19%. Licenses and permits is 58%. Intergovernmental is 37%. Charges for services 51%. Times and forfeiture 43%. Contributions and donations 43%. Interest and income is 144%. Miscellaneous 72%. Other funding sources 135%. Total revenues is at 25% current. That's a 4% increase for quarter two of 2023. Other fund revenue, special fund E911, actual is $259,537. We're at 15%. Water is at $674,592. That's 20%. Airport is $1,265,117. That's 50%. SaaS 2020 proceeds, to date for fiscal year 2024, we're at $5,181,235. That's 23% increase for quarter two of 2023. General fund expenditures, mission in general, admin or general government is 46%, it should be 50% or less. Elections is 55%. Tax commissioner is 45%. Tax assessors 55%. General government buildings is 47%. Total general government revenues is at 48%. Superior Court, this is judicial expenses. Superior Court's at 50%. Clerk of Court, 48%. District Attorney. District attorney is thirty three percent. magistrate court, forty percent. Probate court, fifty three percent. Juvenile court, forty one percent. Public defender, thirty two percent. Overall for judicial, we're at forty four percent. Public safety expenditures, sheriffs at forty to fifty one percent. Probation and drug abuse is thirty nine percent. Fires at fifty four percent. Coroner's at thirty two percent. Animal shelter, forty six percent. EMA, seventy three percent. That's a total of forty nine percent for public safety. Public works expenditures, public works roads is at fifty two percent. Solid waste landfill, fifty percent. Public education and keep Pickens beautiful is at hundred percent. Uh, total public works is at fifty two percent. Health and welfare expenditures, health department, fifty percent. Health department regulations, a hundred and sixty four percent. Health department buildings is thirteen percent. Welfare, fifteen percent. Signature citizen is forty nine percent. And mass transportation is forty four percent. Total health and wel- welfare is forty three percent. Okay, culture and re- recreation, recreation is, recreation center is fifty four percent. Swimming pool is thirty six percent. Program sports, sixty seven percent. Library is fifty percent. Total culture, culture and re- recreation, lord, is at fifty four percent. Housing and development, county extension service is at thirty eight percent. Planning and development, fifty eight, forty eight percent. County marshals at forty two percent. Development authority is secret. Total housing and development is fifty one percent. Total general fund is at forty eight percent, and that's eighteen million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and one dollars. E nine one one, uh, actual is at seven hundred and thirty five thousand, two hundred and ninety. That's forty three percent. Water department is at forty eight percent. Airport is at fifty percent. Total enterprise funds is forty nine percent. That's two million, eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, twenty one dollars. That's it. Any questions?
Questions?
Yep.
I know one of the things that, uh, some of those items, they're funded at the first part of the year, so the expenditure shows a higher percentage than what it was, and it's because it's one-time funding and it throws those off.
Yes.
Um, sometimes it can be misleading when you get tested. Thank you, Brandon.
Most of the revenues is at the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah, the majority of all property taxes are at the end of the year, so you're seeing forty one percent of the revenue comes at the end of the year, uh, in the budget in the fourth quarter. All right, so next up, we've got approval of minutes. We do have a meeting from June the seventeenth. I know that all minutes will provide it to each of you prior to the meeting from this thesis, and you'll get a chance to review those. I will go through them one at a time for, for a motion. If you do have questions, we can address those. There's a regular meeting on June the seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes that were presented from that June seventeenth panel?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion kicked. Uh, the next set of minutes is from the executive session that occurred on June the seventeenth, twenty twenty four, and that will provide it for your review as well. Do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next is the work session minutes from July the eighth, twenty twenty four, where the work session was conducted. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, all minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda deals with our airport authority, and then that we have the gentleman, Mr. Anthony Chris Pears, has served on the airport authority, um, had, had some health issues, and has came up and provided a written notification stating that he needed to step down from that volunteer position, so that we'll take care of that. Uh, I'd like to wish him well. Thank you very much for ours, for all of the service, uh, in serving the airport authority. And with that, I'd like to ask the board to accept their resignation, Mr. Pears, so we can move on to the appointment. Do I have a motion to accept their resignation?
Motion to accept. Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The next is on an appointment to fill that vacancy. Uh, Mr. Mark Christensen, that particular vacancy, the airport authority is comprised of five members, three are pilots, one's appointed from the development authority, and one is an abgeord appointment from within the community. Mr. Pears was the non-pilot abgeord that was appointed on there. Uh, Mr. Mark Christensen had submitted some information prior, with an expressing interest in wanting to retire. Air traffic controller from Tampa originally, uh, has lived in Ventry, uh, for at least thirteen years, has also worked in Kennesaw at the airport in Kennesaw, has tremendous amount of experience in aviation, and brings a different perspective from an air traffic controller standpoint. Uh, with that, I do have a resolution to present before you guys with the recommendation of appointing Mark Christensen to fill that term with the term expiring on June the twenty first, twenty twenty eight, uh, be a four-year term with that expiration in June live. With that, do I have a motion approving the resolution appointing Mr. Christensen to the board?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
She kicks. I used to not have it, Commissioner Tate, and look back from right to left. When I look over, I keep looking at the phone. All right, we'll move on into the rezones for tonight's, uh, rezon request that's been presented for tonight. We'll do our best to go through these one at a time without creating too much confusion as we flip page to page. I do, this one, Mr. Davidson, who dealt with me, I'll give you a group of one of these pages. I would appreciate it. The first is conditional use request, one nine zero six eight three from Global Gear Incorporated, uh, located at one 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 seven eight Henderson Mountain Road. This request is for a conditional use for a missionary training center on a fourteen point six seven acre parcel. Uh, Global Gear submitted an application in March, on March the twenty eighth, uh, requesting this rezon request, um, and if approved, was to operate a missionary training center with two small cabins. Public hearing was held on the tenth of June regarding the application. At such time, after receiving a recommendation for approval from staff, the planning commission also voted six in favor of approval of this conditional use request with conditions for the tract. The conditions listed from staff and from the planning commission was that the applicant shall construct no more than two cabins on the property for proposed use. Applicant shall adhere to all buffering erosion requirements except for public and state laws. Um, that is the, the recommendation provided to us from the planning commission was approval with those conditions. With that, I'd like to open up the floor for a motion for it to be voted up.
Make a motion to approve.
You want to approve as presented with conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so you do have a motion to approve with conditions as presented from the planning commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moving to second, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so approval with conditions. Next is a request of RZ one nine zero six eight five from Holly's Family Trust, located at five five four five Cove Road. Request is to move from agricultural to rural residential on the two acre portion of the twenty one point seven two acre tract. The planning and development office received the application on March the twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, from Mr. Richard Corey on behalf of Holly's Family Trust, requesting a change in land use classification from ag to rural residential on a two acre portion of the twenty one point seven two acre tract located at five four five, uh, Cove Road. The planning commission was held a public hearing on June the tenth, twenty twenty four, where the planning commission voted four in favor, two opposed, um, to recommending approval for the rezon request with conditions for the two acre portions of the parcel. The conditions included that the developer must communicate with staff regarding erosion control to ensure all B and P measures and guidelines were followed and adhered to. So that is the recommendation as it's been provided from the planning commission. Staff had recommended approval prior, so that is how it's been presented forth. Do I have a motion for or against?
I think a motion to approve. Um, if y'all have the copy of the conditions, I want it so you can read it in.
So who have you provided the conditions to, to planning and development?
Two, yeah, Charles and Bill, she both know.
Do you have a copy of this? They're checking right now to see. I have not seen this one. Just about, I can pull it up too.
I can read it if you want me to, I just knew it'd be better if you got a copy.
Yeah, if you want to read your motion now later.
Okay. Okay. Um, the applicant must plant a mix of shade trees along the southern property line and fill in any gaps of existing vegetation. The trees and shrubs should have a minimum of two inch caliper at the time of planting. Necessary to create a buffer that lessens the impact on neighboring residential properties and most importantly, the surrounding areas.
Okay. Open it. Ashley does have a copy of that, so, because I didn't write every bit of it.
I have the exact word.
Can I see it so I can read the motion back out with the exact language? No, sorry. I wouldn't say, just send it to my phone, put my phone to me. All right. So you're making a motion for approval with this. Do you want, is it a motion for approval with this along with the prior?
Yes, with, also with those. Yes, with them.
All right, so the motion is, the motion is to approve with, one, the condition that the developer must communicate with staff regarding erosion control to ensure all B and P measures and guidelines are followed and adhered to. The second condition would be in this motion, that the applicant must plant a mix of shade trees along the southern property line and fill in any gaps of existing vegetation. Trees and shrubs should have a minimum of two inch caliper at the time of planting. Necessary to create a buffer that lessens the impact on neighboring residential properties and the environment and the surrounding area. That is the motion as presented. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So that is approved with conditions. I'm gonna ask that Ashley please send that to me so that she can make sure she approves that as it's written, because I know that was probably sent to her right now. So we'll move on to the next one. I will say that I do get nervous listening to the weather, because in July of twenty twenty three, while having a meeting with this exact setting that we moved to the basement, a tornado actually hit our company. So I've, I've looked twice, and we're not under those kind of threats, not a good, uh, flashbacks. Uh, next item on the agenda is a request from Jasper Property Mentors LLC, RZ one nine zero six eight six, on Mockingbird Lane. It's a request to move a hundred plus minus acres from ag to rural residential. Parcels zero four one, zero four three, zero four one, zero four three, two, one four three, zero zero one, two separate parcels, either combined. Uh, the applicant made an application in April, on April the first, to the planning and development office requesting this change in land use classification from ag to rural residential. Uh, on Mockingbird Lane, the intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, was to develop a subdivision. The public hearing was held on June the tenth. Regarding the application, after reviewing the application and receiving the staff report, the, the county planning commission voted four in favor, two opposed, um, to recommend approval of the rezon request with conditions for the combined one hundred plus minus acres contained in these parcels. The conditions stated in this, uh, recommendation are that access is provided to a front public road regarding ingress and egress to and from the development with adequate satisfaction by utility and letter standards. Letter from Chief, Chief dot stipulating that the current configuration and all associated traffic and safety standards of the intersection of Mockingbird Lane and Highway fifty three and its relative vicinity are satisfied to accommodate the proposed development as entirely. An H homeowners association agreement, if roads within development are to be properly maintained, written acknowledgement of the applicability of the subdivision standards and subdivision standards, uh, subdivision approval process detailed in chapter thirty eight of the Pickens County Code of Ordinance is subdivision, um, and development of the parcels, and a written acknowledgement to the intent to adhere to and comply with said standards and processes if applicable. Uh, that was the recommendation coming forward from the planning commission. Do I have a move for or against?
Make a motion that we decline.
So I have a motion to decline. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions? With that, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so motion to decline has passed. Next on the agenda is rezon request, RZ one nine zero seven zero six from Los Alzachidi on All Red Mill Road, a request to move nineteen point eight four acres from ag to estate residential on parcel zero five three zero zero six. Planning and development office received the application on April twenty fourth from Mr. Alzachidi requesting a change from agriculture to estate residential on this parcel, the nineteen point eight four acres. Uh, after reviewing the application and receiving the staff report recommending the rezon be approved, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted five to zero, um, to recommend denial of the rezon request of the nineteen point eight four acre tract. With that, do I have a motion for or against?
A motion that we go with the planning commission's request for denial.
Okay, a motion favoring the planning commission's request for denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now, here you go. Next on the agenda is a rezon request of RZ one nine zero seven zero seven, Matthew Kinzer at two nineteen Ren Road, requesting to move a parcel of ag to rural residential on a two point seven nine seven acre tract of land off of a sixteen point five two acre tract. The planning and development office received the application on April the twenty sixth from Mr. Kinzer requesting this change on a two point seven nine seven acre tract moving from ag to rural residential. Um, after reviewing the application and receiving the staff report recommending approval, planning commission voted six in favor, zero opposed, to recommend approval of the rezon request, so it comes to us with a recommendation for approval. With that, do I have a motion for or against?
A motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in second, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so the next is the one that we had the public hearing on a little bit at the very beginning of the meeting. Um, this was a request from Mr. Michael Leonard on RZ one nine zero seven one four, property on Steve Tate Road, requesting to move twenty one point six three acres of neighboring commercial to small ag on parcel zero four seven zero zero eight. Uh, that application was submitted on, uh, May the thirty first, and it was requested down zone for neighboring commercial, small ag. Staff recommended approval at the time of the public hearing. Public hearing was held on this date before this board. With that, do others feel comfortable making a motion for or against?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion.
I have a motion.
And it's a second. Any discussion or questions?
Well, I say I'm very excited to make a motion this late.
Hold on. Those don't count very well. All right, so we do have a motion in a second. No further discussion or questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm gonna vote against his own motion.
Why, I'm so, it's all right. All right, with that, we have completed the rezon portion of the meeting and open it up for guest comments. Do we have any comments from guests?
Um, do you want me to say?
You can say anything.
It's a little toasty in here, but.
It is.
Um, well, I need to change up my comments a little bit, at least I'm probably all voted, so that's good. I want to start off, I'm Sarah. One way I just moved up to Top Burnout here on Jasper. You're my new neighbor, so welcome. Very excited for the chickens. We'll bond over. I just want, we saw the zoning changes and the possibility for steel buildings along Highway Five and these neighborhoods coming in into the farms, and I just wanted to say that I've seen that go very wrong over fifteen years, right over, right up front. You know, I grew up in Moore County, Alton Rutledge, two thousand and seven, before the big crash, they built a whole bunch of neighborhoods out there on foreign land that to this day are just empty roads to nothing. You can't do anything else with that land because of all the plumbing and all the wiring that got put in. It's just a stalemate right now, to this day. I've also spent the last ten years traveling all over this country for work. I'm a sustainability engineer, specifically for your wonderful chicken nuggets and the machines that work on those, so I finally got a position where I could work from home, so we chose up on the preserve. And we just wanted to make sure it stayed as beautiful it is, 'cause if you look at any corridor going up north Georgia, seventy-five, five seventy-five, well, four five seventy-five eventually, you know, four hundred, you can look at it right now. We just moved from Sandy Springs where they're building the new, the second, second spaghetti junction in ourselves. We have seen this, just, it has destroyed the area for the locals. And what another thing I've seen traveling, 'cause I travel by car, if you know anything about food production, there is no factories near our airport. Sorry, this is my train block. No factories near our airport, it's a long drive. Those steel buildings, over years, drop down the property value, will knock them down. They sell them for really cheap and end up looking like trash, like honestly, it looks seventy-five north. Does that look good to anybody? I know we have a number of friends following us, both for EMT, fire, and other wanting to move up here because of the beauty and how we have kept it stable. My grandmother was a park ranger up here for twenty years, and honestly, if she hasn't already passed, and she saw a steel building go at home, Highway Five, that would have probably killed her. But I really, actually, I am all for y'all's ruling, so thank y'all so much, keeping our area nice and clean.
If you have firefighters and paramedics that want to move up here and follow you, we have several.
We've got a couple we can speed dial right now.
Several friends coming up that are firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, all across the spectrum of emergency response. I feel that I got problems, so thank y'all for attending. Thank you for your comments.
And thank y'all for the hundred plus acres. It would have changed the outlook completely.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If there's no other public comments, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for purposes discussing the potential purchase of property as well as to discuss with legal pertaining, any, any potential litigation or settlement. And that, do I have a move to go into executive session at this time?
A move. Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will be going into executive session, and we'll be coming back to close the meeting out. You're welcome to stay.